Well, I think we're close enough for government work. I will call to order the regular city commission meeting for Wednesday, April 19th, 2017. Prior to this meeting, we held an executive session of the Urban Nill Commission to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to litigation or litigation likely to be filed and consider information or records exempt from law by public inspection. Oh, I apologize. That's for the executive session following the regular city commission. We had an executive session to discuss a real estate transaction in the Urban Nill Executive Session. So, would you call Earl, please?
Commissioner I, here. Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Mingleberg, here. Commissioner O'Donnell is absent this evening. Mayor Holliday?
Here. If you'd please stand and join me in the flag.
The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ceremonies and proclamations. We have with us our colleague Metro Counselor Clutt.
I like that I'm under ceremonies and proclamations.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
It sounds celebratory.
Action.
Action, exactly. I'm waiting for it.
It's warming up.
It's warming up, I can tell.
Warming up.
Okay, well, I can get started. It's a pleasure to be here, and since I've been here all day, it's been an especially great day. It's one of those days where I started at 7:30, and I've just been going from meeting to meeting to meeting. But it's always especially great to end up here in City Hall with you all, because you are such great partners on so much of what we're doing in the region. And I wanted to start. Whoop, I don't, okay, I thought I hit the advance button. I wanted to start with our big joint project, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. We have the big reveal coming up, June 3rd, at OMSI, and that will be where the design directions will all be presented to the public and to all of you. We will be actually having the nonprofit group, Rediscover the Falls, will be having a special event a couple of days before that for people that we hope will be major funders or big supporters of the project. So, we'll all be getting these big, beautiful pictures together, and I couldn't be more excited. I think this is really gonna be terrific. And speaking of Rediscover the Falls, I think you all know, we formed this nonprofit, we have a terrific board. We do, we are looking for more board members. I've been recruiting a couple of new people. So, if people come to mind, we're really in the fundraising stage, so if people come to mind that you think should be on the board, let me know, or Shelley Perini is our executive director, let us know so that we can make sure that we're expanding the board in ways that will help contribute to the growing support for the project. Eventually, we'll probably have a much bigger board, but right now, we're focusing on big donors. So, if any of you know, people can write, like, the checks with six figures in it. I don't really know very many of those, but if you do, let us know. We'll be happy to take their money and have them working on our project, because we have a lot to raise. I also handed out to you, and there's some more in the back, as of last year, Metro started doing these regional snapshots instead of an annual kind of state of the region. We've been updating much more regularly, and the current one is on brownfields around the region. Some of you may know, a few years ago, Metro helped to form a statewide coalition of cities, governments, other businesses all around the whole state to approach Salem to create a brownfields program, and we hope eventually, a real budget to help clean up brownfields and put them back to work. Just in our region, we have more than 6,500 acres of brownfields. I think that's about the size of the footprint of Oregon City or Tuolatin, a city about that size. So, that's a lot of land that is just sitting there being unused because it has some kind of contamination. And if we could get that land back in use, get it cleaned up, get it productive again, we really want to see that happen, because that's a ton of jobs. The sheet I handed you is just a one-page summary of the website, and I really want to encourage you to go to the website and look at the interactive site that addresses brownfields, because it's pretty cool. It really does talk about where they are, what kind of cleanup is needed, what kind of support we need to do it, to do the work, and I think you'll learn an awful lot. It's a really fun website. I think most of you are familiar with the Regional Flexible Funds Program, because Oregon City finally got its big $3.8 million funding for the Malala Project. This is something that we've all worked hard to get, and Clackamas County did pretty well in the last round of 33 million. Clackamas County got a nice big chunk of that, including the Malala Street Project and Highway 43 in West Lynn, which was one of those situations where the, the, it, West Lynn Project fell just below the line of accepted projects, and the city of Milwaukee stepped in and said, you know, we're not as ready, and frankly, West Lynn hasn't never gotten any of this funding before, so we'll back our project out in order to let West Lynn go forward. So, it's, that was a pretty wonderful act on the part of the city of Milwaukee, and it means that Highway 43, and a lot of your citizens use Highway 43 to get to downtown, Highway 43 will be much more navigable for pedestrians and bicyclists in the future. We're also in the midst now of working on the regional transportation plan and down in Salem on a legislative package for transportation funding. I passed out a couple of sheets to you, particularly because we've been conducting a survey in the region through the month of March of what people think the priorities are for transportation funding, and the far ahead of most was safety and maintenance. And then, following on behind that was biking and walking, some major street work, and transit, rail transit, those kinds of things. But one of the reasons I handed it out tonight was because if you look at this map, the city of Portland obviously had the most people commenting on it, they're big, but second to the city of Portland was Oregon City. You guys had more people commenting and going to the website and giving us your opinions than any other city in the region besides Portland. So, I think that's a real credit to you, to the communication that you and your staff do to get the word out, to have interested people let the region know what your transportation priorities are, and that's the best way for us to help meet those priorities. Land use, we're really busy. I don't think Mayor Holliday was on the urban growth report task force, were you?
No. They asked me to, but I declined.
You busy guy.
Yeah.
Well, that task force met, I think, five times in the past year to help Metro find ways to be a little more flexible in our land use planning approach. Right now, the way the law reads, Metro, every six years, we do a regional scan of what, how much capacity we have for housing, how many people we think are gonna move here, and whether we have enough land for those people, and then we make a decision about expanding or not the urban growth boundary. What the city said was, what about having an interim cycle? Every three, every, not every three years, but between the two six-year periods at the three-year mark, could cities come in and propose a small expansion if that city in particular needs that land? And what our task force decided was, if it means that there will be fewer people moving out to Newburgh or adjacent cities, that we can actually accommodate those people in our region better by having a small expansion of the urban growth boundary, we want to be able to do that. And the textbook case for that is Wilsonville. Wilsonville's a very successful city, has been growing, has been building houses, and has a 300-acre parcel they'd like to be able to bring in, and under current land use law, we would have a difficult time doing that, except on the six-year cycle. So, we went together to Salem and submitted House Bill 2095. It has now passed through, and it will give Metro that flexibility. And we're actually sort of redesigning, if this passes, it'll enable us to redesign our whole approach to land use expansions in that, in the future, it will be dependent on cities to come to Metro to say, we want to be able to grow, we want to grow this much, we have these acres identified, we can annex them, we can build the infrastructure, can we have that urban growth expansion? So, we haven't been able to do that in the past, but if this legislation passes, we'll be able to expand the urban growth boundary in those ways, particularly where it will prevent people having to then otherwise move out of the region altogether.
And what is your anticipation of legislation?
We think it'll pass. It's, there doesn't appear to be any opposition. It's already out of the House and going to the Senate, so I think there shouldn't, there's no, there's no fiscal impact, so this is one of the easy ones.
So, there's no need for me to make a phone call or anything?
I'll let you know if there is. I don't think there will be.
All right.
There are so many more important things, like transportation, to be focusing on that are heavier lifts, where phone calls will be definitely necessary. And probably one coming up might be the locks, the legislation for Willamette Falls locks. We may need phone calls on that, but we'll let you know.
What's the dollar amount attached to that?
The, the, we, the legislation that we submitted called for 666,000. We just had a meeting this afternoon, and we feel like we can actually scale that back. So, we have 400,000 that was already appropriated to the county to do interim repairs. Instead of doing those repairs right now, because it's a drop in the bucket for what needs to actually be done, we thought we would use that 400,000 for some of the work that we have proposed legislation to pay for. So, we only need to ask for around 200,000 from the legislature. So, it's, it's an easier sell, I think.
Sure.
But we'll let you know if it's not.
All right.
And we will need your, I'll get back to you about the Corps of Engineers. We will want as much comment as possible on the Corps of Engineers, because their proposal appears to be to basically do the minimum work on the locks and shut them down. And we would, we are going to rally the region to get a public comment in support of actually helping us restore them and open them. So, you'll hear more about that one.
I'm sure.
That comment period starts around May 15th, so.
Okay.
We have a lot of grant money to distribute today. We used to do what we were calling planning and development grants. Now, we're calling them 2040 Grants. We did them, they were the, the grant money that we were able to award with the construction excise tax. We did that sort of every two or three years. It was a little bit loose, and we've decided that's hard for cities to plan, so we're going, gonna go to every year, $2 million probably every year. We're scheduling it so that it coincides with your budget period, which I'm sure wherever you guys are do the budget.
Parno's not here.
I know he was here.
Actually, Parno's back working on the budget.
Okay, good. Okay, so we'll schedule it with, to coincide with your budget period. So, the applications for the grants are due May 26th, and the, you've already gotten a couple of the community planning and development grants, so I just wanted to let you know, the cycle is open again, and it will be annual. And there's a new grant program that's embedded in that, that's a smaller grant program that kind of fits in a way with your community enhancement projects. It's a $5,000 to $25,000 grant that is designed really around culturally-centered projects in your community. So, things like your concerts might be, or if there's a special, particularly if there's a community of color or a community that is sort of marginalized in the, in the city that has a special cultural activity that they want to undertake, this grant program is for that kind of activity. So, that's also, all of our grants are at oregonmetro.gov/grants. It's pretty easy.
So, where does that money come from?
That's out of the, we had some rollover money from last year that we didn't spend, and so we're gonna use that. It's up, it's $100,000 this year.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the larger umbrella of the grant program. Where does that money come from?
That's that, that's that construction excise tax dollars.
Correct.
Yeah. And in the past, really, Portland has been the biggest generator of those taxes, and they've gotten very little of the money, because in the first couple rounds, the money was all focused on at the edge, doing concept planning for communities that are about to come into the urban growth boundary. Now, we're trying to really support what we're calling 2040 Communities, like downtown Oregon City or the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, projects like that, that actually help people focus attention in our communities that are already inside the UGB, spur development, spur the, the kind of activities that we want to see in our cities and not just out at the edge. So, that's $2 million every year. It's a, it's a pretty substantial program. And those are bigger grants. It's not, I think they go up to, we've given in the 200-plus range. I think actually, Willamette Falls Legacy got 450 or something like that. So, those are bigger grants. Parks and nature, always busy. We gave away last winter, $1.8 million in grants. A lot of the work here at Kanema is pretty well wrapped up. I hope you've all had a chance to walk those newer trails. It's really pretty amazing. We are in implementation, implementation stage on Newell Creek Canyon, and we are planning now for Shehalem Ridge, which will be our biggest, I think, our biggest park other than Oxbow, but it's out near Carlton and Banks out in that area. It's over 1,000 acres, about 1,200 acres, and that one will have a whole mix. Because it's so big, we'll be able to set aside some really important habitat, but also have more community activities and more hiking and trails. Arancal Woods just opened this winter, and that's out in Hillsborough. It's a joint project with Hillsborough and Metro. I haven't seen it yet, but everybody says it's quite cool. So, yeah, to get out there. Equity has been a really, really important initiative at Metro the last couple of years in, I mean, over a very long period, but last year, we adopted our strategic plan to advance racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. And one of the outcomes of that plan, one of the things we heard from all the cities around the region and other jurisdictions was, we can't build anything right now, because there aren't enough trained construction workers, electricians, plumbers, you know, in the trades. And, and a lot of grant money, federal money and state money requires a certain percent of people of color, disadvantaged businesses, doing some of that trade work, and businesses were having a hard time finding those folks that could be trained. So, Metro created a program called the Construction Career Pathways Project, better known as C2P2, and we are partnering with the unions, with various jurisdictions, with various training programs to recruit, train, and get into apprenticeship and get into jobs, people who would normally not get into those fields. So, we're focusing on women, communities of color are the two biggest groups. So, hopefully, that will create what we would call a pipeline, except people think the pipeline means something different, so we were calling it a pathway. But, so people can actually get family wage jobs, and we can move all these big construction projects forward faster. We're also forming a committee called the Committee on Racial Equity, and that, I think, we now have three applicants from Clackamas County. I did some recruiting, and I'm excited to say, well, it's, it's sometimes difficult to get people from Clackamas County to serve on these equity and diversity committees, because we don't have the substantial minority populations that some other, like Portland, has. But we have three applicants for that committee, and that's gonna be one of our base committees, one of our, like, MPAC, JPAC, one of the more core, and it's called core, one of the key committees at Metro, to make sure that we are living the talk, that we are doing what we want to be doing around equity and diversity. And speaking of big construction projects, we are expecting to break ground this summer on the Convention Center Hotel and have the grand opening scheduled for 2019, and we anticipate putting hundreds of people to work during construction and hundreds more full-time jobs after the hotel is built. We're already booking the bigger conventions for, that will use that hotel, so we're, can't tell you how excited we are to be getting this thing underway. This has been so hard and long. This was one of the first, one of my first votes when I came on the Metro Council in 2007, was to try to move forward on the Convention Center Hotel, and here we are 10 years later, and we're finally being able to build this, and I'm really excited. I think this will be a huge, huge boon. And some of the evidence that we know it will be is that our venues are already contributing over $800 million in, in contributions, economic contributions to the region every year. That's significant. That's a lot of jobs. It's a lot of extra money. It's a lot of tax money paying into the region. That's just at the Convention Center Expo and the Portland Five Centers for the Arts. So, it's, we're, it, those are, they're big, and we don't, we don't own any of those facilities. We, well, we own Convention Center Expo, we don't own any of the Portland Five, but we do operate all of the Portland Five, the Schnitzer, the Keller, the Bruning, those smaller theaters. We, we manage those for the city of Portland. So, we're very excited to see the returns on the investment that taxpayers have made in those facilities. At the Oregon Zoo.
Of course, you have to have a picture of the bear.
I know, they had this picture of the Conservation Education Center, and I said, ah, I want a picture of Nora. We are about to begin, you know, detailed design work on Nora's new home, the new polar bear facility, and we've decided that the, the two big projects that we have left out of that bond money that voters in the region passed in 2008, we have the polar bears and primates, and we're gonna do them together, because the campus will be so disrupted. We'll have all the crews onsite. We have experienced crews who know what they're doing, building habitat, which is a very different thing than building housing or even hospitals. They will all be onsite, so we just said, let's just do it all at once, and we'll be getting the designs out to the public very soon, and we'll be seeing this new habitat come together. It is, it's huge, it's pretty amazing. One of the things we've learned in studying polar bears is that they love vistas. They actually, you know, they're used to being able to see long distances, so being in an enclosed area is not comfortable. So, there will be many places on this site where they'll actually be able to peer out over the people and have a great view of the world. And yes, Nora is the most adorable creature. I think most of you know the story, but I can't resist just telling it one more time and taking it an extra minute, and that is that she is one of only six polar bears that was raised by humans that survived, ever. I mean, six out of the total population of polar bears. She was a gift to us from the Columbus Zoo. They, they raised her, and she is internationally famous and having a great time, as you can see. She loves ice, she loves swimming, she's having a ball, but we gotta find her some friends and family, and we need to build this new facility to do that. So, we are building away, we're ready to start that site. And we did just open the Conservation Education Center. I hope most of you were able to make the meeting up there and get to experience it and have a little bit of a tour, because it's a pretty cool building. We had an architects gathering up there last week, and they were very impressed with that, that we could be, it looks like we'll be able to get lead platinum for that building. And if you've seen it, it's lots of open spaces, lots of windows. It's, it's hard to get a building that's lead platinum with that big open of facility. The kids love it. So, I think that's it. That's my update. Any questions?
Commissioner Shaw?
Earl, I just, the Shehalem Ridge, I didn't realize you went out to Carlton. I mean, that's Metro's reach. I didn't realize you kind of went out that far.
The region doesn't, the, the urban growth boundary doesn't, nor does the service district, but we have purchased land that's outside. There's several parcels here in Clackamas County that are outside the urban growth boundary, and the Shehalem Ridge one is a very special site in that it is the headwaters of the Tuolatin River. And a big part of what the voters asked us to get was the headwaters to preserve water quality for the region. So, being, when we were able to score the, that, I think it was originally 1,040 acres, and now it's about 1,200, getting that, getting those headwaters and being able to protect the headwaters is really important for the entire region.
How many acres was that?
It's 1,000, I think it's 1,200 now.
Wow.
Originally, it was 1,041, but we've added some.
So, one example of that is, you know where the Old Lewis Motel was down on 99?
Yeah.
So, Metro bought that, and that's not inside the urban growth boundary either.
Right. Deer Creek is one of our biggest areas. Oxbow, Oxbow, I'm trying to remember if Oxbow is inside. I think it's outside.
Yeah, it's gotta be outside.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else?
Anybody else?
The Convention Center Hotel, is that immediately to the north of the Convention Center?
It is. It's right across the tracks.
Okay.
From the light rail station, and in fact, we are already beginning to redesign and remodel that side of the Convention Center entrance, so that it'll be much more welcoming and use the space much better to be able to have people coming from the hotel easily to get across to the, the Convention Center.
And how many rooms, and when will it be completed?
I think it's 600 or 700. It's, it's, we, we asked for a 500-room block so that we can schedule big events like conventions, so I'm pretty sure that it's 600 or 700 rooms total. It's changed a little bit, because the budget has changed, as you all know, because you build things too, the cost to build things has gone way up since we started this process all those many years ago. So, we did scale back somewhat on the size and the number of rooms, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's over 600 still.
Great.
Question about Newell Creek.
Uh-huh.
I know you're in the implementation stage of the planning process, is that?
Well, we've adopted the master plan.
Okay.
So, and Tony might know exactly where we are in terms of onsite. Are we out there building on it now, or do you know?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. But we're, we're transitioning from master plan to construction of the site.
I know that there's a lot of homeless out there, and I'm just wondering if you have any plans or know of any discussions that have taken place to resettle those folks at, at some point?
Yeah.
You know, their, their home is being displaced, and I was just a little concerned about that.
Yes, we, actually, we have our staff, we have park rangers who patrol that area fairly regularly, and generally, what we'll do is do a sweep, and we try to find alternative housing for the folks that are there. Unlike, you know, the city of Portland made camping in the streets legal. They basically said anybody can camp anywhere on city of Portland property. Metro has not done that. It is still considered Metro parks, and we are, we don't permit overnight sleeping in most of the parks, Oxbow being one that has campsites. So, while we try not to just push people out of their homes, we do try to find them alternative housing, but the intent there is that those places are for wildlife and for the community enjoyment of nature. And so, we're a little bit more rigorous in protecting them than I think the city of Portland has been. I speak as someone who lives along the Spring Water Corridor. So, I, I know what those campsites are like, and literally in our backyard, so.
Any else?
Thank you. So, my only, my only comment is, is that for the Convention Center Hotel, like, maybe 2023 or 2024, you invite the US Conference of Mayors. By then, we would have, we would be well on our, you know, we'd be done with the River Walk, be well on our way for the legacy projects.
Oh, yeah.
So, that might be an interesting thing, and if you talk to Mayor Wheeler about it, I can give him information on who to talk to.
That would be great. I know Jeff, Counselor Jeff Goodman in Lake Oswego is already recruiting one of the groups that he works with, and it's something like National Water Sports Association to hold their annual convention there in 2019 or 2020. So, we are starting to book. We will have full capacity by 2019, so we can handle those bigger conferences then.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Mayor, this didn't show up on the agenda, my fault for that, but there was one more little piece that we wanted to add on, piggyback on to Counselor Clutt, and so, the slide, the presentation's up already, if I could just sneak right through it.
You know I don't like sneaking stuff on the agenda. All right.
Yeah, I mean, given the, the fact that you came, thank you for coming and presenting, just wanted to reemphasize the fact that it is a pretty important project. Keep in mind, those, those flex funds are slated for 19 years, 2019 through 21. We hope to work, the good news about the grant that we got was that it was de-federalized. So, Metro and I think Triment found a way to de-federalize for a handful of projects, and ours was one of them, and that, that means a lot to us in that we're hoping that means results in a good project, but less process, right? So, the limits of the Malala Project are from Beaver Creek to Highway 213, so most of these graphics you've seen before, I just wanted to reemphasize. So, continuous bike lanes along the entire corridor, 10-foot wide, continuous ADA-compliant sidewalks, street trees, pedestrian lighting, ADA ramps. There's pretty much no ADA access along most of Malala Avenue, so that'll all be upgraded. Definitely improvements to the transit amenities along there. We're showing kind of a finished product on one side that's already finished. We won't be replacing that. We'll be fixing areas that don't quite look like that. And then, we'll probably have some areas where there'll be some medians, definitely pedestrian refuge for more like the pedestrian activated buttons that you hit, that tells you, you know, not to cross, or I mean, to go ahead and cross, tells the drivers to be cognizant of the pedestrians, but. So, lots of good things out there, and we're happy that we got those funds. It's about an $8 million project, the city's match. It's about an $8 million project, the cities match. We're going to be using SDCs and payment maintenance funds to make that match, and we do need a pretty lengthy timeframe to make sure we've got the ability to pay for that. But we do kind of hope to get started early, so we'll keep working. I know the federally funded projects, Metro's holding a workshop pretty soon here in May, but we haven't heard much about the de-federalized funds. But we're going to keep kind of seeking early starts so we can get that going. We'd really rather be well underway with this project before the Myers Road project moves forward, because both those projects are going to be big for the city, so hopefully that'll work out.
Questions, anybody?
No, looking forward to it.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So we're at citizen comments. This is allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city but not listed as an item on the agenda. Prior to speaking, citizenship completed comment form delivered to the recorder. City commission does not generally engage in dialogue, and those making comments may refer the issue to the city manager, which shall first be addressed at the department level prior to addressing the city commission. Are there any public comments? Got to get to the right agenda spot here. All right, we'll go in order. So Mr. Wilson, Mr. Harding.
Work together?
You just posted up there.
Oh, I get it.
Yeah, it's a two second.
So since I know we're all, you must be Mr. Harding. Or I mean, Mr. Wilson. Jeez.
Wilson's got to be the two second.
Go ahead, sir. Name and city of residence for the record, please.
Okay, dear mayor and Oregon City Commissioners, my name is Gordon Wilson, and I live at 107 Jefferson Street in Oregon City. I'd like to make some comments regarding item number 17246, personal services agreement with GRI for the Operations Center geotechnical investigation. I'm glad that a geotechnical investigation is being done, but I was hoping its scope could be expanded a bit. Here are some slides showing my concerns. This is the first slide. It is well-known in Oregon City that Oregon City has many geologically sensitive areas prone to landslides and rockfall. My concern is with this ridge, that you can see, right, kind of, I don't know how to zoom on this, but I guess I'll go to my next slide. This ridge right here, let me see, this ridge has failed many times. If you, if you follow this ridge down south along the river, you'll see, as it goes, it's just got all these failure zones. And this, and the public works is at the base of one of its failure points. That's right there at the base of that failure point. So extreme special care is needed when undercutting existing landslides, as not to cause extensive new sliding or reactivation of old slides. There are many geologic warning signs in this area, like numerous seeps, springs, perched water tables, existing landslides, et cetera. Many of these are located across from my house, one block southeast from the proposed public works expansion, so I'm a bit worried. So like, right around here, there's a bunch of springs, and this is a very steep wall. And then also, if you look at the landslide map, it says landslide deemed likely all above my house, so I'm a little bit concerned. So I was hoping that the ridge area there that runs above the public works side and continues southeast directly above Spring and Jefferson Street could also be included in this geotechnical study so that my neighbors and myself can be reassured that we will not be buried by a man-induced 5,000-ton Troutdale Formation debris field. See, I'm worried about that ridge coming down, you know, peeling from here along this ridge where it hasn't peeled yet and then covering my house and my neighbors' houses. So please consider including this ridgeline above Spring Street in your geotechnical investigation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Yes, my name is Ralla Harding. I live adjacent to the city limits, but most of our activities are in the city related to heritage and tourism. I came to make you aware, you may or may not be aware of some things going on in June in relationship to the Rose Festival. We were contacted, my wife and I were contacted in February about Oregon City being included in a couple of activities. One was the Grand Floral Parade, and secondly, establishing two Heritage Days later in June, that's June 23 and 24. They were very persuasive in getting Oregon City involved. I think they're extending into the metro area and wanting communities, especially heritage communities, to become involved in their program, to give more things offering for visitors. So we are, at this point, we are going to participate in the Grand Floral Parade. We were concerned at first that, well, how do you do a float? Well, they're going to take care of that for us. They're going to build a float, decorate the float. Our responsibility will be to provide some people on it, which we are working on now. So we're kind of excited about that. The second thing that we're aware of, or that'll make you aware of, is our heritage, Oregon City Heritage Days on the 23 and 24. This particular activity will focus on eight of our heritage sites, which will offer free admission for those two days. There'll be a number of activities going on at the sites. We are excited about this and the possibilities, and the, of course, the Rose Festival folks are very nice in helping us promote and advertise this through their website, and just a lot of really good help to get us involved. So wanted to make you aware of this. I think, Mr. Mayor, you may be contacted in the near future by the Rose Festival folks.
Well, I guess my question would be, why am I hearing this from you and not from somebody from the Rose Festival?
That's coming up. You will be hearing that.
Well.
I can't answer why they have not contacted you yet. But we were told you would be contacted. So that's the extent of that information.
All right.
And I will ensure that they're aware that you need to be contacted. I'll take care of that.
All right.
Secondly, another thing that you need to be aware of is in 2018, it's the 171st, fifth, excuse me, 175th anniversary of the Oregon Trail. And Oregon City plays a major role in the Oregon Trail, and I think some, we need to begin to think about what we would like to do to celebrate that 175. So a couple of things I wanted to make you aware of.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gifford, Mr. Nacita.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner William Gifford, I live in Oregon City. Just a few quick things, the last city commission, I gave some kudos, and I neglected one, and that was at the Hillendale Neighborhood Association, Tar Vista Neighborhood Association presentation. Kelly Reed did a really fine job of presenting what was going on at the River Walk. I've also been on some tours with, with her leading those tours, and I just wanted to say, I think she's doing a really fine job on that. Secondly, is, I wanted to make a comment about what a really great chamber the City of Commerce has, one of the most active chambers in the state. This morning, the Chamber had their regular weekly meeting, it was a joint presentation. Their weekly meetings are businesses all over the city, but this morning was hosted by the, jointly by the Evernathy Center and the OCBA. Commissioner Shaw was there, saw that, thank you very much for showing up. Very good. Speaking of the OCBA, reminding again, next Tuesday, Bridget Daisy is going to be giving her presentation on, on the impact of education on employment. And I think that this in part ties in with Carlotta's, Commissioner Carlotta's presentation on their C2P2 Construction Career Pathways Project. But also, yesterday morning, the county, Clackamas Community College and Clackamas Workforce had a, had a forum entitled "Reducing the Skills Gap in Manufacturing," which was really well-attended and well-presented, and underscores the emphasis of getting trained, trained employees that might not necessarily need to be going to a full four-year university, but still can be very well-paid and very, very vital members of our, of our society. I also Monday attended the State of the County. Don't always go to those, but it was an interesting presentation. Not one negative word was said about Oregon City, just wanted to point that out, and...
We only had an hour.
No, with the new commission up there, I think it's, it's a lot of new energy and fresh, fresh approaches. I think that I'm looking forward to that. Possibly most significantly, I wanted to point out that, put on your calendar for May 8th, our Commissioner Mark, our state representative Mark Meek is going to be holding a town hall regarding transportation. And I understand that Mr. Lewis is, is one of the scheduled presenters regarding transportation. They're going to have members of ODOT and several others there. So that's going to be at the city library, the Oregon City Library on May 8th. So I hope people put that on their calendar. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, William.
Mr. Nacita?
Good evening, James Nacita, I live in Oregon City. I'm also Secretary of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, but I'm appearing tonight as an individual, not as an officer of the MNA. I'm sharing with the commission a letter that the city manager, Mr. Conkall, has distributed to the Neighborhood Association regarding the application to the HRB that the Neighborhood Association made regarding the two Camp Adair buildings in Waterboard Park. And Mr. Conkall has indicated that the city is going to be objecting to designation of the two Camp Adair Officers Clubs. And I'm a little curious about that because I think that's a policy decision, and I think that, that is the city commission's decision and not the manager's decision. And that is why I've appended to the letter, the city's organizational chart, showing that the HRB is under the commission and not under the city manager. And so I'm curious as to whether, a couple of things, whether A, the commission has in fact made a decision on that matter, and if so, when. And B, I'm curious to know as well whether the city attorney has drafted and distributed to the commission a legal memo on the question of authority and the question of the procedures and rules regarding a public bodies contesting and objecting to a designation of a publicly-owned building. Thanks.
Moving on, we'll go to public hearings. PC 17-041, oh, sorry, I, I felt you even though I didn't see or hear you. So we're going to pull item 8C from the consent agenda. We'll bring that back at the May 3rd city commission meeting.
Thank you.
So now we're on to PC 17-041, first reading of ordinance number 17-1005, approving annexation of zone change for 35.65 acres north of Holcomb Boulevard, planning files and 160004 and ZC 160001. Ms. Turway. Oh, Mr. Walter.
Standing in for Ms. Turway this evening, thank you. So ordinance 171005 is the first of two ordinances approving the annexation of the Sears property north of Holcomb Boulevard. On April 5th, you had a public hearing, and at that hearing, the public hearing portion of the process was closed. So staff is recommending that you not take further public testimony on this issue without reopening a hearing at your discretion. The reason that you have two ordinances, the first one approves the land use findings, which are compliance with the annexation criteria and the zone change criteria. So this will have a default zone of R10 pursuant to our zoning code when it's annexed. If you approve ordinance 171005, then the next ordinance actually changes the city boundary and switches the districts and makes sure that the annexation boundary and the city boundary are taken care of, such as inclusion in the tri-city service district for sewer and recognition of existing service districts and those sorts of things. The, we did have a question on one of the conditions of approval, which was attached to the, to the annexation as part of the findings. And the findings that we've attached are the same for both ordinances. But the transportation condition, which was worked out with the applicant and with ODOT and the city, is somewhat difficult to read, but essentially that condition is recognition of the work that the city is doing to adopt an alternative mobility standard. And prior to any subdivision or approval of land use within the area, when the known impacts of that development are known in the future, we will be adopting a new code to implement the transportation planning rule, as well as in compliance with our transportation system plan, we'd be doing code amendments to Chapter 12.04. And under the to-be-adopted standard, the future subdivision will be subject to compliance. It may have to provide mitigation, or it may have to provide no mitigation, depending on the ultimate decision on those standards. So it's written in such a way to require compliance for those intersections that are identified as affected. And the seven pages of findings that are attached to the ordinance are, include the entire record, but that was before the planning commission and the city commission, and make specific references to certain issues that came up during the public hearing process in addition to the findings that were adopted by the planning commission. Those include discussion of the relevant facts surrounding the annexation, the change of zoning from the county, future urban 10-acre zone to the city zone, a discussion of the transportation condition that I just mentioned, a recognition that the annexation application will not create an island, I was just reemphasizing that, that the existing city ordinances affecting the Barlow Trail will be sufficient and adequate to protect that resource, that land division issues do not apply to the annexation application based on our comprehensive plan, those issues are separate and are reviewed at the time of a subdivision application. And finally, a recognition that the annexation proposal complies with Senate Bill 1573. The finding with respect to Senate Bill 1573 is contained in the second annexation ordinance, so that could be, if that is appealed, that is appealed separately from the findings for the land use criteria. Bill, do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I would note is that this is listed in the public hearings because that's where it started, but you closed the record at the end of the last media major tentative decision, so.
So the only question I have for the commission is, is there any desire on the part of anybody to allow any other public testimony tonight?
Nope.
Okay, then I would be amenable to a motion.
Okay, move to approve.
First reading.
First reading of ordinance number 17-1005, approving annexation zone change for 35.65 acres north of Holcomb Boulevard. Do we need to add anything on the transportation? Okay, that's it?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Shaw, second by Commissioner Maggeburg. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Kabeisman?
Ordinance number 17-1005, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City approving an annexation and rezoning proposal, planning files number AN-16-0004/ZZC-16-0001. and rezoning proposal, Planning Files Number AN-16-0004/ZZC-16-001 for 35.65 acres of property located north of Holcomb Boulevard.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Ayd.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye. So we'll move on down the list then to PC 17-043, First Reading of Ordinance 17-1006, annexing 35.65 acres of property located north of Holcomb Boulevard to the City of Oregon City. Do you have any additional information, Mr. Walter?
No.
Any desire to reopen the hearing? Then I'd have a motion.
Move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 17-1006, annexing 35.65 acres of property located north of Holcomb Boulevard to the City of Oregon City. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mengeberg, seconded by Commissioner Ayd. Mr. Kabisman.
Ordinance Number 17-1006, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, annexing 35.65 acres of property located north of the Holcomb Boulevard to the City of Oregon City.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Ayd.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye. So moving on to the consent agenda, is there any, does anybody want to pull anything else off the consent agenda? We've already removed Item 8C 17-247. Then I would hear a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Mengeberg. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Ayd.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye. So we're down to Communications. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening Commissioners. Just a couple of updates for tonight. We had sent out an email. The Willamette Falls Legacy Project was looking for a City Commissioner or two to participate in the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Riverwalk Transportation Access Summit. And so Commissioner Mengeberg and Commissioner Ayd had volunteered, so we're going to continue to work with them on that summit and participation in that. We will be coming back to the City Commission in a joint work session with the Planning Commission throughout that process as well to provide updates to both Commissions at the same time on the status of that work.
Can you make sure that's on my schedule?
It is on your schedule.
Okay, thank you.
And next, a couple of updates from John Lewis.
So the first one I'll go over is the South End Road project. Just to give you an update, I know most of you know about it, I just wanted to say it in front of the viewing audience.
Roger Wood, do you have a comment?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay. I'm checking.
I'm just excited about it.
So South End Road, the uphill lane or the southbound lane of South End Road, really pretty much between South Second and Barker are closed. The hard closure starts at, just on the south side of Fifth Avenue, and the closures, oh, I guess the other piece I want to mention is, that section of South End Road is a county road, but it's obviously a pretty important facility for our community as well. But they're making the decisions on some of the problems that we're seeing there. Slide-related activity along South End Road. We've historically seen similar kinds of slide activity along there, and this one seems a little more concerning in that it's wetter this year than it typically has been, and they're seeing a lot more of the slide activity, and we're seeing it actually encroach into the downhill travel lane as well. So they've hired a, not a civil engineer, a geotechnical engineer to do some monitoring of that. The challenge is that right now with all the slides in the region, finding contractors that can drill into the slope to better determine where the ground movement's really occurring are booked out for months. So we're talking about more of a June arrival date for that kind of work. In the meantime, they are planning on doing some surface repairs with the idea of a temporary fix that would allow us to open that back up. The main reason why they were closing is because drivers were merging into the oncoming lane to get around some of those grades changes, and so it just made sense to do what they've done. And I think it's working out okay. We've got a lot of traffic that's used in Center Street Hill, which is another kind of concerning area. We'd like to encourage folks to use the detour route that's posted, but it's a much longer detour route, and so trying to get folks to do that has been a challenge. But anyway, work continues on that, hoping with some dry weather that they'll actually be able to do some...
Who is that?
Anyway, that's it. South End Road is, we're monitoring and making progress.
All right.
The other one that I wanted to give you an update on is Clackamas River Water and the work that we've been doing with the Clackamas River Water District. If you remember, there was a requirement in our latest agreement with Clackamas River Water to do a joint engineering study. This week, we had that first meeting with them, and it was really a very productive meeting. Just so you know, there's several focus areas where we both serve to some degree, so the edges of their limits and our limits get very kind of mixed and crossed. So there's, what is that, eight different areas there that we talked about, and really, I think some of them are easier to resolve than others. South End is a challenge because there's, you know, there's a lot of, they've got a lot of lines out there, they're older lines, and yet we've got a concept area out there. It's trying to, you know, trying to figure out for them what lines they should invest in and replacing. Are they going to be in the right place versus the wrong place when we see that area redeveloped? And then, of course, the Beaver Creek Road area and the HOP area, those are kind of areas that we've, in the HOP area, for instance, we've had a longstanding agreement with CRW, and so we do share service areas in that area. So I think it's more of the same there. Beaver Creek, I think there's potential for some capital improvements that would be shared in a way that would benefit both of us, maybe reduce costs. So we're talking about those at the staff level. We think the right thing to do is get through that and get through the, kind of the engineering work, and then we've been talking about having a joint study session with the CRW Board and the City Commission, and so we're thinking maybe a June timeframe for that kind of an update. So just wanted to let you know that that was going, and we had a good meeting, and we were all friendly and...
We need to be in a June timeframe for that? Could we push that to August?
Can I get back to you on that?
Yeah, I'm going to be gone for two weeks in June.
Okay. It's important that you be there, so yeah, we definitely need to work around that.
Mr. President.
Is that it? Okay.
Next, at the City Commission work session last week, we discussed the Ermitingher House and the consultant that was starting work the next day. Mr. Lewis has an update on the Ermitingher House and some of the work we've done since last Tuesday.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, so just want to give you a little bit of an update on the Ermitingher House. We were able to meet with the contractor and secure a May 1 anticipated construction completion date, so we're very happy about that. We have passed our first inspection on the drywall, so we're working on mudding and taping and then painting, and anticipate again for that to be completed by May 1. We have a meeting scheduled with the Friends of the Ermitingher House for Friday of this week. We're hopeful that over the next couple of weeks, we're able to come to an agreement on the terms of a contract with the Friends of the Ermitingher, and then to be able to come to the City Commission work session on May 9. So hopefully, over the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to have some things lined up, and then to be able to come back with more information for you to consider.
Is there a City Commission liaison to that group?
There is not currently. If there's a City Commissioner that would like to be...
Go ahead.
Say, how about we work with the Friends group to come up with, you know, hammer out as much of some type of a working agreement if we can, and we'll bring that to the Commission for their review.
All right. Go ahead.
Couple other dates that we're trying to target, so by mid-May, we're hoping to be able to sort the current inventory of Frencher items, and then looking at, hopefully, an anticipated soft opening date of June 16, and then again, to be able to open up to the public for the Oregon City Heritage Days event, which is on June 23 and 24.
So we're talking about both levels or just the ground floor?
At this point, has not been confirmed. We would have to, again, as we meet with the Friends group.
Okay. Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That should make Commissioner Smith happy.
Err.
Ish. Mr. Conkell.
And just lastly, we have a, we did a system development charge up in house back in 2015, and talked about some of the, specifically focusing on transportation system development charges. We were having a system development charge roundtable Tuesday, April 25, next week, 9:00 to 11:30 here at City Hall. Just want to make you aware that we're reaching out and having that roundtable with interested parties as well.
So interested parties are whom?
Who did the invite go out to?
So a lot of the folks from the initial STC Forum, so they wanted to be participants as well.
So you invited the home builders.
Home builders, definitely, yes, but most of that meeting wasn't home builders. So business community, open to the public. I know we mentioned it to TAC last night, so there's two folks there, and we had a general email list, we sent that out.
That concludes my updates for tonight.
All right. Commissioner Mengeberg.
See, I attended the Clackamas Community College Technical Groundbreaking, as did all of the other Commissioners. It was a wonderful event, much anticipated, very excited to see the final building be completed. Also stood in as an alternate to Mayor Holliday at the C-4 meeting that same night, and they talked a bit about affordable housing, and their next project will be doing some kind of a study that quantifies the issue and provides more detail about it. So they'll be developing a scope of work, and there'll be continuing conversations about that.
Commissioner Ayd.
Just a variety of meetings, but the highlight was the groundbreaking at Clackamas Community College for the Tech Center, so I'm very excited about that.
Yes, that was a great, great event there. I actually got to take a few individuals into the machine shop that they have right now and kind of show them what I do for a living, so now I think people understand that I actually get my hands dirty, so. Also attended TAC last night with Mr. John Lewis there. That was great. They do a good meeting there, and those guys do a great job. And then with the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, and had a little review again of the Public Works Building, so that's it.
Okay. Well, I did a little speech find at the Tech Center opening, that was fun, and I'm excited to see that go on, the little story I told, Joanne Truesdale is the president of the Community College, and she and I graduated the same year from Oregon City High School, so taking different educational paths, we ended up on the same podium 38 years later, so I thought that was an interesting divergence there. The other thing I have done last Thursday and Friday, I was in Santa Barbara for the United States Conference of Mayors Water Council meeting. I'm a member of the Water Council. South Fork Water Board paid for that trip, didn't come out of the city's budget, but the Water Council's an interesting group, you know, a lot of folks from, and they held it in Santa Barbara this year because they were anticipating still being, talking about a drought, and then, of course, there is no drought in California right now, so. But I got a lot of good information, some of it I've shared with Mr. Lewis. They're currently in the process of building a $35 million desalinization plant to supply drinking water. It's just unbelievable. They were kind of blown away when I said we had the oldest perfected water rates in the state in Oregon City, so we were terribly worried about losing our water supply, but there's a lot of conservation things that we can do moving forward that'll come out of me being on the Water Council, and, you know, got to make some new friends, mayors of different cities in California, and the more folks we meet and connect with, the more chances there are for a solution of a problem that maybe we don't have a solution to, and to be able to reach out to other mayors and say, hey, I've got this problem, how can, you know, do you know anything about it? And so, you know, developing those relationships is important. Other than that, just move along. Is there anything else for the order? Then we are going to recess into executive session, and we do not anticipate a need for to return to the regular session to make a decision.